Nothing about this.
He was my guest, though. Oh, you might have heard something about it.
Yeah.
I was trying to express myself.
I can relate to that. Sometimes I don't.
It's cool. Full enrollment? You got all, you got a waiting list. Hey. Oh, did you?
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry I couldn't get out of the past. I was at Little Rock all day yesterday. So I got behind on it.
Chuck.
Oh, it's all right.
I'm sitting in the city council office. I gave you a hard time. Yeah, that's right.
Hi, Justin.
Used to have those big laptops. I never had enough even space to sit in. I thought, oh, well.
You read every email you get in your city email? You read every email you get in your city email? Not me.
I probably have a hundred open right now. I can't, I can't catch up.
I'd like to call the city council meeting of March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, to order. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Gray, here. Marsh, here. Kenyon, here. Teddy, here. Tannett, here. Lutcher, here.
Here. Okay, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business we have tonight, I believe we have the nominating committee report. Mark, do you have that?
Yes, we do. Again, we had a really incredibly talented pool of applicants. We always want to encourage applicants that don't get accepted this time on the slate to apply again. There's always openings. I submit for consideration the following slate. For the city board of health, Robert Patton, one expired, one unexpired physician term ending twelve thirty-one sixteen. For the Fayetteville Public Library Board of Trustees, Malin Rice, one term ending oh four oh one twenty. For the Animal Services Advisory Board, we have Jill Hopkins, one unexpired term ending oh six thirty seventeen. And Allison Lowe, one unexpired term ending oh six thirty fifteen. For the Audit Committee, we didn't have any applications, so I hope in the next quarter we'll have someone that will apply for the Audit Committee. For the Board of Adjustments, we have Scott Blacksher, a term ending oh three thirty-one eighteen. Catherine Baker, a term ending oh three thirty-one eighteen. And Porter Winston, a term ending oh three thirty-one eighteen. For the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, we have Porter Winston, one term ending oh three thirty-one twenty. For the Planning Commission, we have Ryan Noble, one term ending, ending oh three thirty-one eighteen. Matt Hoffman, one term ending oh three thirty-one eighteen. Tom Brown, one term ending oh three thirty-one eighteen. For the Telecommunications Board, we have Zach Tamajani, one term, one, one unexpired term ending oh six thirty seventeen. We had an opening on the Town and Gown Advisory Committee. No applicant was interviewed, so again, we hope that there will be applicants and we can interview to fill that spot for a student, and that term will go through oh nine thirty fifteen. I submit this for consideration.
Okay.
I move we accept.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the nominating committee recommendations. Any discussion on it? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Gray, yes. Marsh, yes. Kenyon, yes. Teddy, yes. Tannett, yes. Lutcher, yes. Long, yes.
Okay. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Number one, approval of March third, two thousand and fifteen, city council meeting minutes. Number two, resolution authorizing acceptance of funding from the Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars for the police department and to approve budget adjustment. Number three, resolution to approve federal police department policies, one point two point one, limits of authority, one point three point one, use of force, one point three point four, less lethal weapons and defense tactics, forty-six point one point ten, active threats, forty-eight point one point one, next to in notification services, and seventy-one point one point one, detainee transport. Number four, resolution authorizing contract with sport court in the amount of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars pursuant to the tips-taps in our local purchasing system contract for the purchase and installation of new gymnasium flooring at the Yvonne Richardson Community Center and to approve a project contingency in the amount of five thousand eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents and to approve a budget adjustment. I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agendas read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agendas read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Gray, yes. Marsh, yes. Kenyon, yes. Teddy, yes. Tannett, yes. Lutcher, yes. Long, yes. Long.
Okay, unfinished business. An ordinance to enact Article Three procedure to exercise initiative and referendum rights of chapter thirty-six elections to the federal code to clarify the proper procedure for the citizen's right of the initiative and referendum. I'll entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
Some moves.
A motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Gray, yes. Marsh, yes. Kenyon, yes. Teddy, yes. Tannett, yes. Lutcher, no. Long, yes.
In ordinance to enact Article Three procedure to exercise initiative and referendum rights of chapter thirty-six elections into the Fayetteville Code to clarify the proper procedure for citizens' right of the initiative and referendum. City council, I prepared a memo to you today, and what happened is that when I originally drafted this proposed ordinance concerning municipal ordinance referendum language, the state statutory requirements for county ordinance referendums was very simple and very clear. It was also in agreement with the statutory requirements for state statute referendums. Thus, I believe it would be very clear how municipal ordinance referendum would be worded if we just ensure it complied with the state statutory language for county ordinances and for state statutes. That's why I believe I could review it and have it all ready and corrected if necessary within a couple days. Now, State Representative Ballinger has proposed House Bill sixteen eighty-seven, which changes the wording for county ordinance referendums, but does not change the statutory requirements for the wording for state statute referendums. And in some cases, the statutes would be conflicting if this House bill is passed without any changes. It is passed the House, and I believe it's now the Senate. I don't think it has passed the Senate yet. If this bill becomes law, it would no longer be a simple and easy decision exactly how to word municipal referendums, and therefore, I think that I don't want to be put in the middle in this particular case to have to try to decide something when it's no longer clear. So as I suggested back in February with my memo to the city council at that point in time, I would recommend that the current ordinance, which is in front of you, in fact, be amended to remove the city attorney from having to make those decisions and go with the same proposal I had provided to you back in February, which instead simply talks about that the petitioner will comply with those particular state statutes rather than having the city attorney having to review the ordinance. I put that second ordinance on the back of this memo I handed out to you here and that I emailed to you. It's very short. It was provided, as I said, back in February before the ordinance review committee meeting.
Okay. So, do we have any questions for Kit on this? And I think the First Amendment you're talking about is removing you from the review of the...
Yes, to go to the ordinance, which is on the back of this, which was also the ordinance that was presented to the ordinance review committees for their review. I don't think we ever finally got around to it, but, but was prepared and provided to all the city council back in February.
Okay. Okay, so the first order of business, okay, yes, John.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ensure that when the people rise up and begin a petition process, the authority for the wording of that petition remains with the people and their legal representatives, not with city administration. From my understanding of this new proposal, that is the case, correct?
Yes, and it will follow state law to some extent, because, so it's not just with the wording of the people, but the wording from the people's representatives, the state legislature, who then, who has the power to say how county resolutions or referendums should be worded. So it is with the state legislature that makes that decision. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, John?
All for now.
Okay. Yes, Mark?
I think we should leave this on the second reading, so we'll have some time to see how the legislative action will fall out, and then we can review it.
I think, yeah.
I agree with that.
Now, do y'all want to go ahead and do the amendment to remove the city attorney for preview, or do you want to wait till after the legislature gets done before we do any action on this?
I would like to wait until the legislature concludes before we take any action.
Well, I mean, I mean, we'll just leave it on the second reading. Okay? All right? Now, what we will do is take some public comment. Now, no action's going to be taken by the city council tonight, so it'll be two weeks before the council makes any kind of action on this, if I understand the wishes of the council, correct? So, and probably if the state legislation is not passed by then, then possibly then it will wait another two weeks or whatever, okay? So, I will open it up for some public comment, but just keep in mind that there'll be no action taken on this tonight, and it'll be at least two weeks. Is any public comment? Okay.
Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Duncan Campbell, reside here in Fayetteville. And as it relates to the ordinance here, the first thing I might say is the fourth, the second, or the third and fourth whereas, it says the lack of clarity for proper municipal referendum procedure led to litigation against the council and the city clerk and the mayor. And I would just say that, that, that this did not happen in court. I was there every day in court, and the lack of proper municipal referendum procedure was not what, what brought anybody into court, not at all. That simply was not the case. Second, whereas, the litigation, this litigation can be avoided in the future if the city enacts proper procedures modeled upon long-established state law. Again, I don't think that's, it, there's no guarantee at all that it would lessen the amount of times the city might come into court. Anytime there's a referendum or an initiative, the city is liable to go to court, because if somebody disagrees with something related to a referendum, the city, by the very nature of the city clerk certifying petitions, would have to go to court. And that's, that is the main reason why the city was brought into court. The second reason the city was brought into, to court was, had to do with the Scrivener's errors that were done during the procedure. That was the second point that the ACLU brought up. That was it, as far as the city is concerned. The county was brought into it related to language, ballot language. That's why they were brought in. But in all cases, the clarity of the ballot language, the judge ruled very clearly that it's just like even today, I could ask the same question, how many people understand the word repeal? If anybody doesn't, raise their hand. Well, everybody understands the word repeal, for and against, and the judge made that real clear in court. The second thing I'd say is that, that is this, is for any city attorney to be given the power to, to change or amend language, the right of the petition, for the people to petition the government is, is in our constitution and the Bill of Rights. And so, by the very nature of people petitioning the government, they need to be the ones who decide what words to use in that petition. I actually believe that if the, if the city were to do this, it would bring more lawsuits, because then either side, whatever the city attorney decided the language was, either side then might disagree with that, so it might, it might double the, the chances for somebody to go to court. And the last thing I would just say is this, is that, that the Arkansas Constitution itself gives people the right to petition, and advancing the, the power to any city attorney to change or amend or correct that language would suppress the people's right to petition the government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Now, everybody keep in mind that there's no going to be any action taken on by the council tonight that they're waiting on state legislation. So, but if you have something else to say, I'd be glad to entertain.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. It's Peter Tonison. I live at thirty-five hundred Hearthstone Drive. Yeah, I want to speak out, I guess I'm speaking out against something that doesn't exist at this point. So I do want to distribute some exhibits that may become more material if this goes on. I have packets of exhibits.
If you'd hand those to the clerk, she'll be glad to pass.
I can do that. I have exhibits with staples on an angle, staples that are vertical, or paper clips if you just want to shred it quickly. So I'll pass these through if there are any extras. They're just exhibits. They're not my thoughts.
It's all right. It's all right. We won't shred those too quickly. Yeah, we'll recycle them. We recycle them.
But in, in terms of, all right, let's go to, let's go to the February eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen memorandum from Mr. Williams. I don't understand what that ordinance would accomplish. It's basically telling petitioners to obey laws that already exist. I mean, it's a law saying, follow the law. So I, I just don't see what it accomplishes. In terms of the way it was originally proposed, I would strenuously object, and I just want to lay out some thoughts for the members of the council to consider. There are three objections, I think, to having the city attorney pass on referenda and initiatives. One is the potential for additional delay. I realize the city attorney says he could do this in two days and would, but already the petitioners are allowed only thirty days. The Constitution would permit ninety. I don't know why it couldn't be sixty with the thirty-day allowance at the end. But other people have made that objection. I was at the meeting on February eighteenth when there was an attempt to mark up the original proposal. The second objection to having the city attorney pass on this is the control issue, the power of the pen, and that is the first exhibit that I handed out. There's an article from the Democrat Gazette from February twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, and it talks about the Eureka Springs ordinance. And it says, "The Eureka Springs City Council approved the election at a special meeting Tuesday. They're having a referenda on this similar ordinance. The move was a gambit to give the council more control over an election that appeared inevitable. A petition drive has been underway in the tourist town since Friday to gather the ninety-six signatures necessary to force a referendum on the matter. By calling for the election instead of being forced to have it by referendum petition, the council in Eureka Springs gets to control the ballot wording," said Alderman James DeVito. Quote, "We felt like it would behoove us to control the ballot wording rather than let it rest in the hands of a group that might make it more confusing for the general public," unquote, DeVito said. So the ability to draft any law is, is a great, is a very strong power. And the last reason that concerns me is because I am an attorney. I've been an attorney for thirty-eight years. I'm a member of the bar in three states. I've said this before, but I'm saying it again. What concerns me most about this is a presumption of correctness that might attach to the city attorney's view, and that there would be judicial deference to his substantive decision. And that would be a real risk in three areas. One, if it were a hot topic, a contentious issue like this one, where the judge said, well, I'll just defer to Mr. Williams. The second one might be close, where there's a case involving close issues of fact, maybe a nuisance case, but there are, the facts can go either way, and the judge might say, well, I'll just do what Mr. Williams said to do. And the third issue would, the third instance might be where there were clear issues, but either a distracted or a lazy judge. And I can tell you, having practiced law, the judges wake up in the morning and find out their wives are going to leave them, or that their son is sick or has cancer, and they're distracted, or they've got a big murder trial starting next week, and they are human, too. And a judge in a, in a clear case might just say, well, I'm going to do what Mr. Williams said to do, because I've got bigger fish to fry. So this power, giving the power to the city attorney to word a referendum or an initiative, and then, in essence, to decide it in the first instance, might be outcome determinative. And in fact, that's what Mr. Williams suggests. He says in his February eighteen memo at page two, "Because of those, because of those increased problems and litigation dangers, I suggested the upfront review, correction, and certification." That's an official act by the city attorney. That is more initial work for the, that is more initial work for the city attorney, but this work should pay dividends for petitioners who would be substantially less likely to have their sick petitions thrown out by later legal challenges, because at some point it might become Mr. Williams' version of the petition.
Well, excuse me, but Mr. Williams has suggested tonight he not be the one that reviews that.
All right, but I understand this is going to be, I'm just planting some seeds of thought, because if this goes forward the way it was originally proposed, Mr. Williams, I mean, if you want to hold off on that, we can hold off on that until this case is fully right.
Well, I mean, I think that Mr. Williams has suggested tonight that he not be the one that reviews the referendum, correct, Kit?
That's correct. All right, Your Honor, well, that's, that's a relief, then I don't have to get into the merits of why I would object to that. But then I'll just end with this question. What then is left on the second page of the February eighteen memo, this new, like, superlight, lean and mean ordinance that says nothing? Just says, "The petitioner shall ensure that the form complies with a statute." That's an initiative. "The petitioner shall ensure the form of any referendum petition complies with the statute." And "The petitioner shall ensure that any ballot title conforms to these two statutes. So as not to be misleading to the voters." Well, it's still going to be determined by a judge when the time comes, so I don't know what all this is all about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Faniff, Aqua Crossing, Fayetteville. I do have comments, but I have to admit that I'm a little bit confused, and I was hoping that you might be able to straighten me out. I'm burdened with an old man's ears, and I couldn't hear all the conversation that was going on when I was sitting in the back.
Okay.
Is it my understanding, now, I know that the city attorney said that he does not believe that the city attorney should be the one who makes these determinations. Where exactly is it that we stand? Are we saying that what has been originally proposed as an ordinance where the city attorney is specifically written into the ordinance is removed from consideration, or is it...
No. Mr. Faniff, what the council's got to decide whether they wish to remove the city attorney, his recommendation is to put an amendment where he be removed from doing the preview. The council did not wish to take any action tonight. They're waiting to see what occurs with the state legislation.
Yep, okay.
And probably this, there will not be any action by the council, if I understand, for at least two weeks, and by that time, the state legislation will be done, whatever they're going to do with it.
Okay, so assuming that the state legislation answers the questions that are before you, are we to assume, what, let's say that it does not do so, that the state legislation does not resolve it completely to the council's satisfaction? What would the next step that the city council would take under those circumstances, given what is already before it?
Well, the council will bring it back, and they will look at it, and they will make a determination on what they want to do with it. There may be amendments put on it, there may be no amendments put on it. The state law may supersede anything that the council passes. We don't know the answers to those questions, at least for another two weeks. I don't know what this council's going to do. The council decides what they're going to do and what type of legislation they would like to pass. And then this administration administers whatever legislations that they pass.
Okay, so if there were amendments proposed, we'd be dealing essentially with a different ordinance, and would we go back to first reading and that whole thing again, or what happens next?
I have actually no idea. We will bring what we have back to the council in two weeks, and they will look it over again and decide if they want to make amendments. By that time, state law will probably be decided upon. If not, then the council may decide to wait and table it and go another two weeks. I don't know. I can't answer those questions until we get the legislation back and they make determinations on what they wish to do as the legislative body of the city.
Okay, but in two weeks, there's no way that a final vote could be taken?
It could be.
So a final vote could be taken?
Could be taken.
Okay, well, in that case, then, if I may, I would like to speak to the issue. If what you're telling me is that we are still in the same position that we were in, that there is still a possibility that the city attorney might have that burden, despite the fact that he is asked not to have it, then in that case, then I would like to be able to make comments.
And just, and if that's why I've opened it up for public comment.
Okay, I didn't want to burden you with my comments.
You don't burden me, public comment does not burden me.
All right, good. All right. Thank you, sir.
Let hap.
All right. I had five brief observations for consideration. My first observation is that the proposed ordinance, to me, violates the very Constitution that it states is the basis for its legitimacy. The proposal says, "Whereas Amendment Seven of the Constitution, now codified as Article Five, Section One states, municipalities may provide for the exercise of the initiative and referendum as to their local legislation." However, Section One of Article Five summarizes the reason that a lot of us have a problem with this in the first place, is that it states, Section One of Article Five states specifically that the people reserve to themselves the power to propose legislative measures. The first sentence of paragraph two of Article Five reads, "Initiative." The first power reserved by the people is the initiative. The first sentence of paragraph three starts, "Referendum." The second power reserved by the people is the referendum. So this proposed ordinance gives power to the city attorney that is constitutionally reserved to the people. My second observation, should the council go against the city attorney's recommendation, is that to me, there's an obvious conflict of interest for any city attorney to be an advisor to one party in a conflict, which is essentially what a referendum or an initiative is, and an objective arbiter between both the party he advises, which is the city council, and the challenger to that people, party, which would be the people. So that's what is proposed in the ordinance that would be brought before the council, that it makes the city attorney the arbiter in a situation where he's essentially involved. I mean, to me, it's the equivalent of having a defendant in a law case determine the final wording of a plaintiff's case, and it seems to me absurd on its face. The third observation that I have is the hope that objectivity can be assured under the proposed ordinance defies common sense as it's structured. Fayetteville citizens deserve an objectivity in any future considerations, regardless of the issue, or regardless of which side they stand on the issue. It's not necessary... It's not necessary to question any city attorney's intentions to observe how the city attorney's office during the controversy over 119 was clearly not disinterested or objective. So it's not a judgment or condemnation, it's just a simple observation. The city attorney publicly admitted helping to craft the language for what became Ordinance Five, Seven, O, Three. And it seems to me it's an integral responsibility of the city attorney to advise on the crafting of language. So it's a perfectly legitimate function. It just defies common sense that an individual could be an objective arbiter to a language that he or she helped to craft. My fourth observation is that the actions of the city attorney's office during the 119 battle demonstrates the inherent quandary of a controversy, which is what the city council ends up facing, when the people decide that they want to revoke something that was passed by the city council. The city attorney publicly stated that it would, I'm almost.
Mr. Faniff, you're beginning to get on a little bit of thin ice here, coming against the character of the city attorney of the, of the city.
Uh, excuse me.
Just ratch it down.
I have not even mentioned a proper name. Am I incorrect in that the city attorney is actually in office?
He is.
Okay. That's, I am speaking about an office, and it is irrelevant of who the person that's sitting in the chair is.
But you made reference to the 119 while he wasn't.
I, and what I specifically said was the office of city attorney. I was very careful not to do exactly what you're asking me not to do.
Mr. Faniff, let's move along with this. Make your statements and move along.
That's what I've been doing, sir.
Okay. Move along.
Okay. Well, I will not be accused of character assassination, so I would rather you don't say that.
I would rather you not come against the city attorney.
I am not coming against the city attorney.
I'm going to ask you very nicely.
Article Two.
Finish your remarks, I'm going to have you to sit down.
Article Two, Section Three of the Arkansas Constitution gives me the right of remonstrance, sir. And I would like to remind you of your oath of office, to protect and defend that Constitution. Please, allow me to finish.
Mr. Faniff, Mr. Faniff.
Yes.
This is a city council meeting, this is a public forum, the mayor is the chairman here. I think you ought to be allowed to continue. You don't have a constitutional right to act in a disruptive manner or.
I have a constitutional right to remonstrate and not be accused of character assassination. I have not said a proper name. I've referred only to an office. I've, I made it a point not to pick, to say a proper name.
You mentioned the city attorney.
Well, we're talking about, city attorney is in the ordinance. How can I not refer to city attorney, when that's the essential element of what's in the ordinance?
Mr. Faniff, finish your statement.
Thank you, sir. And I will.
Quickly.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I proceed? Thank you for your permission. Let us give any city attorney the benefit of the doubt, and assign to any city attorney a superhuman capacity for self-denial and objectivity and fairness. Let us grant any city attorney our absolute trust. And then I would like to quote from Sentinel in the Anti-Federalist Papers, Number Twenty Two. He said, "Certain characters, now on the stage, we have reason to venerate. But though this country is now blessed with a Washington, Franklin, Hancock, and Adams, yet posterity may have reason to rue the day, when their political welfare depends on the decision of men who may fill the places of these worthies." I stand with Sentinel. Our concerns with this ordinance are substantive, reasonable, and constitutional. Thank you for your undivided attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Who else would like to address this?
Good evening. I'm Kyle Smith, Ward Four. And I hear a lot of questions coming, but pardon, the, I'm a teacher, and the desire to answer questions is, is a driving one. So Mr. Faniff pointed out the constitutional power given to the people, but that follows with all of the protocol established by the legislature, that a portion of falls to the city council to determine how petitions are formed for city issues. That would seem to be well within the purview here. The state doesn't have good quality guidelines for the city, and this ordinance would fill in that gap. So it does that, my understanding is just by referencing existing standards for other levels of government.
Yes.
That doesn't seem like it's going to introduce a lot, a large new controversy to our local procedure, just to sort of fill in the overlook and establish that we will do things the same way that the county would. The state legislature may change those guidelines. Senate Bill Sixteen Eighty-Seven, like you said, sets guidelines for the language of the ballot. This ordinance seems to refer to another part of the state law that's not considered there, that would set the form of a petition. And just make sure that everything, that everyone knows exactly how to present a petition in ballot language, so that we all come into something like this knowing what to expect, without the confusion that, that puts us in, in a place to argue in court about it. I think that ought to be a comfort to anybody involved in the process, to know the rules. And as an extra note, Senate Bill Sixteen Eighty-Eight would give sixty days instead of thirty, like Mr. Campbell was suggesting. So there are lots of moving pieces here. I appreciate your patience in waiting for the state to iron out their details, and I look forward to being back here once they're done, to see how we'll wrap it up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the council. We're going to leave it on the second reading, I assume.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to answer some of the questions that were asked, if that was possible.
Yes.
There was some statement that there's always going to be litigation when you have a referendum. Well, we've undergone three referendums since I've been city attorney. We only had litigation involving one, which involved the ballot, or how the, how the signatures were obtained or anything. It was only the last one. The first two, there was no litigation about that. In fact, if there had been, I probably would have been looking at this language earlier, realizing that we had a problem that, that needed to be fixed, and that did not become apparent until this most recent third referendum. So both the smoking referendum and the impact fee ordinance referendum, there was no litigation involving that. We did get litigation in the smoking one, because they tried to claim that the law preempted us from doing anything, but that had nothing to do with how the petition was prepared, or worded, or anything like that. Now, it has been mentioned by two of the speakers that you can't have a government official effective wording of a petition. Now, why did I ever come up with the idea of the city attorney could look at the state law and make sure it complied, and then say it was fine? That's because the state legislature has required the attorney general to look at every petition, or referendum, or initiative on a state statute, and correct that, and make sure it passes his muster, and say whether the title is to his liking. I think you all have seen many, many times in the, in the news about concerns and fights between the attorney general and people trying to get things on the statewide initiative. Well, the attorney general is also a state official, also an elected official. It's not a violation of Amendment Seven for him to do that, just like it would not have been a violation of Amendment Seven for me to look at this and say, "Does this comply with the state law?" Now, another individual said, "Well, we've already got the law, it's already in existence, so it does nothing." Well, the law that I cite does not affect municipal ordinances. It's for county ordinances or the state statutes. What this, what my language would do is say, "Well, we want to comply with that." And the reason for that is that the Amendment Seven says that municipalities have the right for, to have the procedure to enforce Amendment Seven, where the state statutes control county ordinances. I don't know why Amendment Seven broke it up like that, but they did, and therefore, if we don't have language saying that we will comply with the county ordinance referendum language, then there's no real guidance. It's, it's just open and unclear, just as the attorney for repeal 119 said, "It's unclear how to draft these petitions and how they should be worded, and that's why I think that we need to do something." The power of Amendment Seven was certainly reserved to the people, but you've got to read Amendment Seven completely. You don't just say Power One, Power Two, and pretend that the other three or four pages don't exist. And one of those powers is the power of the municipality to correct the procedures, or to, to state what the procedure shall be in order to affect and, and, and exercise the power of the people. Just like the state legislature has given the power for county ordinances, and also state ordinances, and there are many laws that do that. So even though there are laws that are helpful and describe the proper procedures for a referendum petition or initiative petition, how many votes must be gotten, all that kind of stuff, we can have, we have the same right, and really, I think, the duty to do that as a municipality. So the power of the people, I hope, is going to be improved by this language. That was my intent, so that people would not be confused, would not, would know better how to exercise the referendum rights. I think the city attorney can be objective, even though it was, to some people, might seem superhuman. I don't think it is. And in fact, if you remember right, I, I read you some emails from the attorneys representing repeal 119 that I'd received, thanking me for being so cooperative and helpful, and they can't remember anybody as easier to work with. It's very easy to be objective, because even though I work with you, and I have a lot of respect for the council and the mayor, I, my primary duty is to our citizens, and that's all the citizens, even those citizens that might disagree with an ordinance that the city council must pass. So it's very easy for me to object, be objective. It's not superhuman, it is my, my duty to my primary clients, the citizens. I'd also like to remind one of the speakers that even though I did work on the Civil Rights Administration ordinance, and crafted language to that, which I think is part of my duty, I also drafted the amendment requested by Alderman Tennant to, to have the ordinance go directly to the voters, so that it would not have to have a referendum petition, but it would be voted on by the voters. I can easily, I didn't feel like I had any objective problems, whether I was helping Alderman Tennant or Alderman Petty. I thought that my duty to help both of them is the same, and I will, and I would do that for any alderman here that needs to have an ordinance drafted. So anyway, I guess that's about it, and I hope I answered all the questions there. I, I do hope that the, you will remove me from the, the middle of, of this ordinance. I don't think that really it is probably going to be necessary, and I do think that there's going to be a bill passed in, in the legislature, which will create some confusion about exactly how referendums should be worded, and I would not be very comfortable trying to make that decision on my own. I had hoped that it would be simple and clear, and we could avoid litigation by just having the proper petition form done, but it looks like that might be something that will not be possible. I don't disagree with you all waiting, but I'll let you know as soon as I hear something on that bill.
Former Chief Justice of the U.S. Supreme Court was William Rehnquist. This is a little short story to illustrate the point. The rules of the Supreme Court say that the chief justice has to assign the writing of the case to a member of the majority vote. I don't remember the specific case, title, and site, but William Rehnquist and some of the conservatives on the court had voted together, and the liberals on the court had voted together, and it was a five-four victory for the liberals. Justice Rehnquist, being the chief justice, changed his vote to vote with the liberals, so he would be part of the majority. Remember, the rule is, he has to assign the writing of the case to a member of the majority. So it gave the liberals on the court a six-to-three victory. But he assigned the case to himself, so he could write the opinion and limit the damage. You see how politically shrewd that is? Drafting the ordinance, or editing an ordinance that's been drafted, is extremely powerful. Justice Rehnquist illustrated that to the entire world, by switching his vote to vote with people he didn't agree with, but in order to give himself the liberty to write the opinion. That's what concerns me most. Mr. Williams, I appreciate your candidness, but we cannot guarantee that the next city attorney will be as objective as you are. And that's what concerns me. Let's leave the people free. Let it be said in Fayetteville, Arkansas. The people are free to hire their own legal counsel, they're free to bring their own petition, without interference from someone who may not be as objective as our, excuse me, our current city attorney. Let's leave us free.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, all right. Let's go on to item two. Resolution removal of, resolution of order to raising and removal of a dilapidated and unsafe structure owned by Kenneth C. in Wondell, Easternly, located at nine oh nine West Eagle Street, in the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and to approve a budget adjustment.
Mayor, since the last meeting that this was tabled, from the, the structure has been removed, and so staff would simply recommend this item be denied, and this matter will be closed.
Okay. So we would vote, we have, need a motion, a second to deny, or just vote the ordinance down, or whatever we need to do.
The resolution, so a motion, a second to deny.
And even though you are denying it, your, your initial interest in this, in fact, led to the cleanup, so it was certainly not time wasted, and I appreciate Jeremy and his staff working with the person, so they would actually voluntarily clean it up themselves.
So just a basic no vote would be sufficient?
Need a motion, yeah, a motion to deny the resolution.
So moved.
A motion, a second to deny the resolution. It would be a vote yes, then, on the amendment?
Yes.
Yeah. Everybody got that?
Yes, to deny.
Yes, to deny, is everybody?
Okay.
But I guess we have got to, um, this is not the original resolution, so would this be?
Yeah, it is. It's, it's a.
Okay. So it's a motion to deny the resolution, and you would vote yes. Correct?
That's correct.
Making sure. All right. Everybody got that?
Yes.
Any public comment on this? Okay. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Shotmar?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. Next order business is we have a public hearing that I will open. It's on a resolution to grant certificate of public conveniences and necessities to Dynasty Limousines LLC. Destiny. Thank you. Did it again, didn't I? I marked that where I wouldn't do that. Destiny Limousines LLC, DBA Ambassador Transportation Services for the operation of two-six taxi cabs in the city of Fayetteville. Okay. Chief.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm glad you said that, and I didn't have to.
Yes. I've done it twice now.
So we do have an application for, it's actually a limousine service, but as the mayor said, they're doing business as ambassador of transportation, and it's actually for taxi cabs. They've asked for a minimum of two and a maximum of six to be authorized. They have provided us all the proper documentation as far as insurance and those types of things. And I've got some numbers here, if you guys want to hear them. We currently have five companies operating in the city of Fayetteville, and currently we have twenty-one cabs permitted for the year 2015 so far.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Actually, do you have a question?
Yes.
Chief, on the application, do you recall if they made specific mentions of whether they would do business on certain days of the week?
Uh, I think I do recall seeing something about that. Give me one second. I'll make sure I'm looking at the right one. Says list any days you don't propose to provide taxi cab service to the general public, and it says they're closed on Christmas Day, and run limited on Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve.
So that's the only limit, limitations that they list, so.
That's the only limitations they list. They, they say your, their hours are Monday through Sunday, twenty-four hours a day.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions, chief, on this? Okay. What other public comment do we have on this? What other public comment do we have on this? Okay.
Are we, did you put the?
Yeah, well, I've posted a public comment.
Okay, is the applicant, is the applicant on the speaker?
Well, somebody needs to do whatever they need to do here.
I'm Dane Zimmerman. I'm the owner of Ambassador Transportation. We were here about a year and a half ago in November 2013, and of course, we were denied at the time for taxi services within the city of Fayetteville. I can tell you, nothing's really changed for us, other than we've continued to grow. And we continue to raise issues with doing business within the city of Fayetteville and our taxis, and it's, personally, it's become kind of a hindrance for us as a company. We're kind of faced with the fact that we continue to bring a few hundred people a year to Fayetteville to do business, or we just stop and say, I'm sorry, we don't operate in Fayetteville, period. Give you an example, one of two things usually happens. When we drop somebody off in Fayetteville, let's say we come to Dixon Street and we drop them off at ten o'clock. They say, come back at midnight and pick us up. It's two hours. Takes us about a half an hour each way to drop somebody off and drive back and forth, basically, between Bentonville and Fayetteville. In that timeframe, we're out of business. I mean, that taxi can make no money for an hour while he's there. What he could be doing personally is sitting here in Fayetteville and potentially soliciting business while he's waiting on that returned customer, because what happens if we don't, we show up at twelve o'clock to pick that customer up. Oftentimes, he's not there because he got in another cab, and the timeframe it took us to drive here. Many other reasons, I mean, it could just be that they walked, or they, you know, a friend took him home, whatever it may be, but those are some of the issues that we have with dropping people off in Fayetteville. The other issue is, we come up and we pick our customer up, let's say, two AM. And if you've been on Dixon Street at two AM on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, you know there's no shortage of customers for taxis. And so what we get is the constant, can I ride? Can I ride? Can you take me down the street? Can you take me down the street? And they forcefully get in our cabs at that time. We have to kick them out of our cab or risk taking them down the road and getting a citation by the police department. So that's an issue with us. Other side of it, just to give you a background of our business, we're not a new business. We didn't just start. Been in business for three years. We have a very good reputation in Bentonville and Rogers. We currently operate eight vehicles, four of which are taxis. The others are sedans or large passenger vans. We obviously are not Fayetteville-based. We however do, again, bring a few hundred people a year to Fayetteville, as well as service some of your hotels. So other than that, we are one of the few companies in Northwest Arkansas that utilize an automated dispatching system, which is, I will, I will take some flak here on this. I'm not going to stand up here and fight Uber or Senate Bill eight hundred, which you're probably going to hear about tonight. I personally believe that Uber brings a different level of competition, and that's what inspires me to move forward with some of our technology, to make sure that we meet and outperform what they do. My personal belief is, is the competition inspires better service. So we have the same mobile app capabilities, or we'll have the same capabilities. You can book online and get the same capability that they have now. I'm not saying that we're going to come into this market and take over by any means, because I don't think anybody can do that. I think no one company can service the entire city of Fayetteville. Your companies here are doing a great job at what they're doing, but I will say that Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, they are very limited on what they can do. So last time I sat down without asking, are there any questions? And it kind of, it burned me, because you can't, I can't come back up. So do you have any questions for me about my company or what we do?
I have one.
Okay.
I asked the chief, but I just wanted to ask you, as the owner of the business, so you mentioned Thursday, Friday, Saturday. One of the big concerns that I've heard is that while it's understandable that there might be a necessity for more cabs on the weekends, there's also the question of the other days of the week.
Right.
And that it may be, that there is the thought that it may be unfair to the companies that do run seven days a week, if another company comes in, not just your, anybody's, that comes in just in the, you know, in the busy time, so to speak, even though that may be the necessity. I'm not, that's not the debate. I'm just asking, in your business plan, do you, do you run in Benton County seven days a week, and do you have the intention to do that if the need arises here?
I, so we do, we run in Benton County twenty-four-seven. We don't stop. I will say that, and Mr. Curry can vouch, we do business very well together. I don't have any problems sending business to other competitors. I'm not here to step on feet by any means. If I can't get to Fayetteville, I'm going to send it to somebody that is in Fayetteville, so that we're not taking that business from them. I'm not trying to put anybody out of business. Again, the factor here is that I have to be able to do something with my cars when we waste the time to come down here. And that's the point here. I mean, if it takes us, if we've got to send a couple of cars down Thursday, Friday to help these guys out, because I'll tell you one thing, the last time we talked, we mentioned that there was a twenty-minute wait most of the time for taxis. If you're drunk on a Thursday and Friday night, twenty minutes is four hours. It doesn't matter. I mean, you're going to go, whatever you're going to do, if you walk down the street and get in your car and drive because you're tired of waiting on a taxi, because you thought that you had waited four hours, but you'd only waited fifteen or twenty minutes, that's just what they're going to do. So if adding one or two more taxis sporadically throughout a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night to help relieve that pressure is going to take a few more drunks off the street, what's the hurt? I don't want my kids in a car, driving through, and a drunk driver that waited fifteen minutes for a taxi to get in his car and take off down the road and slam into the side of the vehicle. That's the point.
And I appreciate the taking drunk drivers off the road, and I bet the chief does too. So one follow-up question would be, so did you mention if you don't have a car here, or you can't get a car here? Let's say it's Monday night, something happens on Dixon Street, there's a need, somebody calls you, and you don't have a car here. It seems to me it wouldn't make sense for you to drive all the way from Benton County just to pick up one driver. So would you then, you're saying you might pass that on to another?
We absolutely would.
Okay. Just clarifying.
Just for, I mean, and I'll give you an example. I know for a fact, Green Cab operates six taxis. They operate those between Fayetteville and the airport. Well, they also have a requirement to be at the airport and cover the airport with a certain number of cars. So there are times that they're in Fayetteville operating, there are times that they are in, at XNA operating. On busy days, they're at XNA operating throughout the week. So it's not uncommon to call Green Cab and say, well, it's going to be an hour wait before we can get to you, because they've got to send a car all the way back down here. Logistically speaking, we would pick up the phone and call somebody like Dynasty or whoever wants to work with us in this process, and say, hey, there's a customer standing at the corner of such and such, can you help them out?
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Zimmerman, I think the water's fine. Come on in.
Thank you, sir.
I think the best way to serve the people of Fayetteville is to offer the maximum number of service providers we can. I don't think we should dictate to them, you have to operate on this day and not on that day. Let them do what's best for their business, and you'll find service elevated to levels we haven't experienced before. We think that the people who hire taxi services are people who've been drinking, or people who can't afford a car. I say, bring in an innovator who's done something we haven't seen before, and maybe families would hire taxis to go for a Sunday afternoon drive, and let somebody else do the driving, and we can look out the window. An innovator can bake the pie bigger, not just split it into smaller pieces. And the only way you can get those innovators to do that is to let them into the market and let them try. If there are too many market participants, if there are too many taxi cabs, somebody's going to go broke, right? It won't be the best service that goes broke. It'll be the most expensive and the worst service. If the current environmental, the competitive environment is providing all the good services we need, what do they have to worry about a little additional competition? And if they're missing some of those opportunities, why should we complain about a little additional competition to spur them on to a greater level of service? The more, the merrier, in my mind. If you can make a living, come on and do it.
Well, and I'd like to add that, you know, I just think that, I've spoken with Fayetteville Taxi the other night about the same issue, and I'm here on a microphone on TV saying the same thing. I'm not here to step on anybody's toes. I'm not here to try and run people out of business. I think for us to save, and this is speaking of my industry against a large competitor like Uber, our way to save our industry is to make sure we're as accessible as possible to the public. And no one company in Fayetteville, or Bentonville, or anywhere in Northwest Arkansas can say, I can put enough cars out to service the entire city at every moment that it needs. It just can't do it. We can't financially afford to do so. We have to operate extremely low overheads in this industry to make it. And they're going to tell you the same thing, because they're going to come up and speak in a minute, about how hard it is to do this job, because being in a taxi business is extremely hard. And so by me coming into you and saying that I need to come in and I need to be able to take care of my customers that we're dropping off, and as well, take care of some of the downtime that these cars are driving back and forth and potentially feed the mileage that I'm putting into these cars, that's the appeal I have. I mean, I have to be able to maintain it, and then these guys as well have to be able to maintain the customer base that are here.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, what other public comments do we have on this?
Good evening, Stu Larabee, Fayetteville Taxi. When Mr. Zimmerman had applied last year, it revealed a little bit of information to me. I'll get to that here in one second. There are many who wanted to speak here tonight but cannot, because this was scheduled on St. Patrick's Day, one of the most busiest taxi days of the year. Many of the drivers that I've personally spoken to will all agree with the fact that right now, there are huge gaps in between runs. The whole taxi model nationwide is based upon independent subcontractor. So a lot of the burden of not getting work is placed on all those drivers. Now, I could easily add more people, find more people that are very hungry, and make them go out there and starve, and I'm always going to get a cut off of them, no matter what. But I, I'm not going to play that game that way, so I'm doing it a little bit differently. Now, with respect to, I've not heard one taxi driver out here anywhere now say, we need even one more taxi, because unfortunately, the whole Uber taxi situation has been running unchecked. They kind of are acting unstoppable. And I asked senior drivers for both Green Cab and Dynasty to come up with calculations of like how many runs they've done conservatively, by how often we see them in and out of there. Unarguably, in six months, they've done over ten thousand runs easily in and out of Dixon alone. That's just there. We're not, we don't see all the runs they do all over the place. That is an absolute unarguable figure, and we know it's more like twenty thousand. Now, that's already been taken in the last six months. Drivers there have lost a lot of tip money, because this whole business model across the country is set up with tips, and people aren't required to tip. Some don't tip, but the ones that do inevitably offset your rates. Without this, and with the Uber model coming in, now, the tips are gone, people are forgetting to tip, people are forgetting to pay, oh, I thought you were Uber. No, not with the taxi light and all the taxi signage, we're not Uber. They're forgetting to pay, they're forgetting to tip. Again, tipping is optional, but people are customary. I imagine if you went to a restaurant and were not tipping, they wouldn't really probably come to your table too often anymore. And it's a part of that business model also in the service industry. So it has affected this industry on many levels, to the point now that the rates, if this continues, are going to have to come up. More drivers out there, splitting the runs up amongst more drivers, is going to mean less money for the drivers, and there's already been drivers leaving. One just left about two weeks ago and ended up going, had a medical problem, not supposed, I'm probably not supposed to say, but they had a medical problem, but they were stressed out over the lack of runs that were occurring, and because they essentially are, I don't know if you want to call it profit sharing, but independent subcontractors, they are all suffering the pain. Every one of those drivers out there is suffering this pain of not getting the runs. And if you go out there on Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, you know, one o'clock, you can see half the taxis sitting there doing nothing. And we're sitting there watching these known Uber taxis drive in and out unchecked, unscanned. The police department, in twenty-seven weeks, has been able to cite twenty-five cars by the paperwork that I received. That's less than one per week, yet they're doing anywhere from five hundred to one thousand runs per week at times, when it's busy. Before, when Ambassador had filed, and they submitted their paperwork and showed their insurance, it's of particular interest to me, because I pay for insurance. I have paid for taxi insurance from day one. Taxi insurance is the highest form of small car livery service that you can have. It allows you to pick up people that just walk up to you, flag down on the street, and on demand, and fractionalized car service. A taxi with a taxi meter in it is the only legal way to take a car service. It's normally done by an hour or two hours, and fractionalize the rates. The meter is approved by the U.S. Department of Commerce. Many people do not know this, but the meter is actually approved somewhere else, same as a gas pump, anything else. That way, it can be inspected. It has methods to be inspected by an inspector to come out in the field and jump in the cab and inspect it and make sure it is accurate and functioning properly. You cannot do that with the Uber platform. We have to abide by this, and it's the only way to do a fractionalized system. This is why taxi exists, and this is the primary reason why taxi can be an independent subcontractor status. And where car service is generally two hours, because you have to pay an employee for two hours, and we can't be using independent contractor generally in a car service environment. Now, when his insurance is showing seven cars at an annual premium of twenty-one thousand dollars for three hundred thousand combined single limit, that raised some question with me, because right now, my insurance is set at one hundred thousand combined single limit. I've had the ability to go to the airport for the last six months, when down under went out of business for several reasons, including what was going on down here. I've been in line for over two years to get into the airport, because they're only going to let so many people in there, so they don't starve everybody out. I got called, I set it up, I'm paying to be at the airport without being there right now to hold my spot, and that is perfected. Uber was announcing it's going to come out. Don't know what's going to happen, because I'm sitting here looking at everything in the press and everything else, what's going on with Uber, and it's like, okay, this is bad news, this may be a mute issue, if they're going to just come in, start up, be told to stop, and then continue. It all depends on what government is actually going to stand up and do to stop them. So with looking at the airport, if I move my insurance right now for two vehicles, at a hundred thousand combined single limit, is eleven thousand dollars a year. I kick it up to the airport requirement, because they want three hundred thousand, and they can only state that for their property. As a taxi, on demand, walk up to me, anything else, street hails, they want close to fourteen thousand, maybe thirteen. I can adjust a little deductibles here and there. Mr. Zimmerman's insurance for seven vehicles at twenty-one thousand doesn't compare, and right at the top of the paperwork that you have, it says airport transportation, which is not the same grade or coverage of insurance as taxi. I called that insurance company a year and a half ago, trying to get a quote. It's like, hey, cheaper insurance, this is what I do. What isn't going to be that rate? Oh, and by the way, we can't touch you, because the insurance company you have now, we're owned by the same company, Berkshire Hathaway, which is also owned by Warren Buffett. Warren Buffett has also got his hands in investments into Uber, so he's got both sides of the fence, I believe. This is very unusual to have this. I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place, because I'm paying for the right insurance. I'm listed as taxi insurance from day one. Now, Mr. Zimmerman is stating that he's been running two taxis up north for some time, and on a phone call that he made to me two days ago, stated that he's running all of his car service cars as on-demand taxis up there. I'm told I can't do that by these same insurance companies. So he's doing it, and his insurance that you have, according to his insurance company and mine, isn't the right coverage. It's not the same rates that are being paid. This is not a fair, this is not a fair competitive advantage. And I'm sure if anybody else caught that, they may not be too happy about that. The amount of gaps that exist down here on Dixon can be ridiculous. To think that there's a bar rush that taxis used to take care of, which was the prime objective, and many nights of the week at two AM, you can see all the taxis sitting there doing absolutely nothing, and here's Ubers rolling in and out, scooping up people. Now, taxi being a regulated service has to exist if driving is a privilege. I don't know if anybody follows that concept, but as soon as you say, driving is a right, then taxis don't exist. If driving is a privilege, then the government has a requirement to offer these services, and it must regulate it. They can have unregulated maybe, but not at the way, not at the way it's working right now, because it's very predatory to come in and undermine the pricing. It's not going to work, and their insurance is not the same. And originally, twenty-four of the fifty state's insurance commissioners' offices came out originally and said, their insurance isn't what the paper's written on. So I don't know. So, I don't know where this is all going to go. I'm a little... Mr. Zimmerman before had specifically stated that he did not want to lose, in his previous hearing, he did not want to lose the $70 runs coming down here. Now, as far as the state statutes of what the city can do, this is for pickups is what you're allowed to do. This is my reading of it. You can't stop anybody from coming down here and dropping off on the ordinance level. Otherwise, if it was, we could have Company A in Fayetteville, Company B in Springdale. If neither one of them are circled, how do you get across the city line from one to the other? He can come down here and drop off all he wants if he meets the state requirements. It's him picking back up is the issue. And that's what you're opening up. If you open it up as 24-hour pickup and everything else, then that's just one more group that's going to be down here. And right now, bar rush on many nights, streets bare by 2:10. I don't see a wait time occurring. And all these drivers that are afraid to come in and speak want these comments passed along that there's just, at this point, it's been decimated. I mean, unarguably, 10,000, but I know that number's closer to 15, more like 20,000 runs have been taken from the licensed taxi companies in six months' time. Now, those numbers add up. Loss of tips to all the drivers, which was a part of the compensation. Then, their cut or share of the split is gone. And they're sitting there doing nothing just by twiddling their thumbs, wasting time. And a lot of them are moving on and the debates of how many of them are about ready to go out the door is incredible. Now, Mr. Curry had arranged a meeting with the city that... A few days ago, and I was in attendance to it. Everyone from the mayor, the city attorney, Don Mar... Everybody doesn't think the taxis are going to survive with this Uber model running unchecked. Irregardless of state Senate Bill 800, I would like to know why there's no fight being put up now against Uber. Because they're easiest thing in the world to catch. When you look at the app, you can zoom in and see exactly where they are. If they're sitting in their house, you can tell whether on the one side of the house or the other side. The app will let you zoom in that closely. I don't understand the failure to do blanket sting operations and come back and cite them all later. Right now, the whole taxi industry that's here in Fayetteville and nationwide and worldwide is being decimated by Uber. But they've been kicked out of Nevada, they've been kicked out of Spain, they've been kicked out of lots of other states, counties, cities. And Uber is throwing and whining over San Antonio because they made a level playing field with their rules. And they won't abide by them. Now, as far as the number of taxis that are here, it's going to be hard for any of these drivers to hear that you would approve more taxis to be out there and split what runs there are up and that's it. There's only so much business that's going to occur. You keep dividing it down, I don't see how it's going to be financially feasible for them. And even city officials admitted they don't see how it's going to be financially feasible for any of the taxi companies to survive. So, I don't see how this is going to work with adding anybody else at this point. Unless you're willing to take an absolute proactive approach to Uber and shut them down with a court order. Then, we can talk. But right now, respectfully, no thank you. It is not going to work. It's going to be very damaging. It already has been.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Alan?
I'm... Real quick, I just wanted to ask you. You'd mentioned that there's not... There's definitely too many cabs to service the population is basically what you said with no gaps in service.
There are, well, there are some gaps in service, but I mean, I don't think a 10-minute or 15-minute wait time, even 20 on a few particular nights. If you're getting kicked out of a bar at 2:00 AM in the morning, you're waiting till you get kicked out. I don't think you have the right to go outside and throw a tantrum and demand that you have your cab there in five minutes.
Well, the reason I ask is I actually had my car break down about three weeks ago. You know, I wasn't drunk on Dixon Street. I was calling for someone to come pick me up around 8:00 o'clock at night. And I tried for 30 minutes to get a cab and I could not. And I called one of my friends and they said, "We'll call Uber." And I said, "I'm not doing that." I said, "I'm on the city council in Fayetteville. I'm not going to break the law." But I could not get a cab. I'm just, I question the fact that there's not a gap in service on a normal basis. And that, and being as reliable means of transportation, I just don't think that there are enough.
Well, there's no guarantee that the Ubers will ever be there because they work at will. There's no scheduling, there's no... I mean, they can just all decide not to be there. It's because they... So...
I'm not talking about Uber though.
Yeah, we... You know, the Uber thing, I'd like to stay with this gentleman coming into the city of Fayetteville right now, if we could.
Agreed, but with need and necessity, it's hard to ignore it when it's already decimated the numbers already. Because they are taking the taxi runs equivalent to bringing anybody else in officially. They're doing it illegally and taking the taxi runs.
Okay, so, let me ask one more question and then I'll leave you alone. So, you would like us as a city, even though there are gaps in service, which is public necessity here, to protect your business by stopping competition?
Competition, if it's illegal and doesn't play by the same rules, is not competition. They're thieves. Period. Okay.
Good. I thought we had all the necessary forms.
I think we do. You know, I think the police...
I'm talking to Uber. I'm sorry. We met Ambassador. I'm sorry.
Have reviewed the insurance forms and that kind of stuff. So, it should be the thing on the level playing field for another taxi company to come in. That's why they're here asking to be permitted to come in.
The insurance, right on the face of it, says airport transportation insurance. It does not say taxi. They are completely different rate structures. I went, when I saw that a year-plus ago, I went running to that company to get a quote and I wasn't surprised what they told me.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question for the chief staff. Chief Staff, can you speak against the Uber legislation?
Yes, I was... Yes, actually, anything that would remove the ability for the city to regulate our services is something that the city has typically taken a position on. Whether that was the telecommunications ordinance at the last legislative session or the taxi cabs. I do want to clarify one point that was made in it. I don't think we made the comment that the taxis would go out of business. We said it would be a very change in the competitive environment and we expected that legislation to pass based on what we saw in Little Rock.
Okay.
I don't know if there was a question coming to me, so that's why I came back.
No, I didn't have a question. John, did you have a question? You seem like you had a question.
We'll always have questions, Mayor. I'm still getting educated. I find it amazing that we're having this discussion about limiting competition. The more competition we have, in my mind, the better service we'll have for our people. It guarantees they're paying the lowest price for the service and they're getting the best service. I'm regulated. As a CPA, I'm regulated by the Arkansas Board of Public Accountability. I have to get 40 hours of continuing professional education every year to stay abreast of the tax law changes. Do you think that's why I get that education? Not at all. There are 300 other CPAs in this area that love to have every one of my clients. That's why I stay sharp, is because I'm operating in a competitive environment. Not because the regulators in Little Rock, you have to do this, you have to do that. The marketplace is the best way to serve people. And the way you do that is with robust, wide-open competition. May the best man or woman win.
Okay.
My name is Robbie Freeman. I'm the new general manager for Dynasty Taxi. I've been working on Dixon Street for about five years now. And over the five years, we brought in Fayetteville Taxi, Piggyback, Safe Ride, Carpool Vans, Uber, soon-to-be Lyft, NWA Taxi. Okay, there's a lot of competition there. We're also competing against the new student housing, which is all just a walking distance from Dixon Street. With all of this combined, my paycheck has gone down 30 to 40 percent. And I'm just barely making it as a taxi driver. Same as our 30-some drivers. Most of our drivers have been with us since day one. I'm talking nine to 10 years. We don't only do business on Dixon Street. But for us to survive, we need Dixon Street. We also do hospitals, nursing homes, we deliver pharmaceuticals 24 hours a day. We are a public servant. We're not just hauling drunk kids around. We have a lot of drivers that love their jobs. And it would be a shame to see that go away. I know Daines Zimmerman, he's a very good guy and he runs a reputable business. But right now, there is not room for the bar rush. There's really not. Saturday night, we were extremely busy on Dixon Street. I went around and took pictures of 12 of our taxis sitting at midnight. For us to stay alive and be a public servant, it's going to be extremely hard. Bringing on another taxi company, it's not going to be good. Because it's not going to be, none of us are going to be able to survive. And Uber, you cannot pick up the phone and call them and say, "Can you bring me a prescription to this nursing home?" You can't call them. You cannot call them. And we take a lot of disabled people to work every morning. We pick them up in the afternoon, we take them home. We know them by their names. They know our drivers by names. We won't be able to do that anymore. You know, I just took over about three weeks ago and I was handed a nightmare. I really was. It is survivable. But once Uber gets in, and God forbid another taxi company come in, it's going to be hard to survive it. We've got 17 taxis on the road. I don't know how we would survive it. That's about all I've got. Y'all got any questions?
Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate so much what you all are doing. Certainly do. I wonder what kind of explanation do you have for Alderman Long that at 8:00 in the evening, you know, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the evening? How come there were no taxis? What evening was it? Was it a Thursday?
It was a Thursday or Friday night. I can't remember.
Did you call Dynasty?
Yes, I did. That was the first call I made, actually.
There actually shouldn't have been. That could have been a drop ball.
The reason why is 521 Taxi.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You've got a call.
That could have been a drop ball at 8:00 on any evening. We should have gotten you in 10 to 15 minutes.
And no one answered the phone.
Yeah. So, I guess, you know, that, I mean, I, we've heard this before, that we don't need any more cabs.
You know, if you were to bring one in, I would highly recommend Daines Zimmerman, but there's not room. There's really not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Who else would like to address this? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Virchell. I didn't come here for this issue. I came from the next issue. But it's a related issue and so I thought I'd just say a little bit about it. At the moment, I am employed as a taxi driver for Green Cab, so I kind of am in on that. And I mean, I just would, I wasn't expecting to talk about Uber either, but that's what everybody wants to talk about. And the way I envision kind of forward and keeping things together, finding a Fayetteville solution for Fayetteville problem or a great Fayetteville problem, which is how much fun we all have in this town. We really kind of do need a robust marketplace. I mean, you're, the only way to really do anything about Uber, which is substandard in a lot of important ways. The only way to really tackle it is to beef up the offerings that we have here in Fayetteville and neighboring communities. And another point to consider is the notion of honest reciproc... reciprocal, honest reciprocity. Honest reciprocity, which is that we kind of treat outside communities and companies the same way that they treat us. And I know that as a Green Cab driver, we are able to make intra Bentonville or intra Benton County runs. And so, it would be reciprocal if a Benton County company was allowed to make intra Fayetteville, intra Washington County runs. That's all I have to add.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Questions? Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to address us on this?
Mr. Mayor, council members. I think I've said this before. Here we are again. I had a pretty much an outline that I was going to give tonight. I did not know that my manager was going to be here. I kind of knew that he might, but I didn't know he really would be here. So, I admire Robbie for coming in here and doing this. I asked a few of my drivers to come in here and talk with y'all. I will have to admit to you, and I think I said this the other day, is that I'm not in that office all the time. My management is. They've asked me two weeks ago to get out on the streets and basically go out with them and see what was going on. I believe, well, we won't get into that. So, I went out and just took notes of everything that was going on on Dixon Street. And this was a Friday night. I stayed out. I got up 7:00 that morning. I stayed out until 4:00, working with my team. I haven't done that in a long time. And I got to see it. Uber has basically knocked me off with my cellphone. I cannot get on the Uber app. They know who I am. They know I'm Bryce Curry. They know I own Dynasty Transportation. So, they have cut me off. The only way I can see Uber right now is I've got to get a burner phone, give some fake name, put up a fake credit card and then I can see it. So, I took a friend of mine with me. It was not hard to go out and find the cars. They were all over the place. I watched my cars sit on Dixon Street while I watched Uber cars pick up. Not only Uber cars, I watched vans that belonged to, I think, different companies now that were not even brought into the original agreement. I watched some little guy in a taxi cab called Rideshare. He was just moving all over the place, just sitting there picking up people. So, we basically got the wild, wild west out there again. What I basically came in here was that I was not, I didn't want to discuss that need more cabs in the city of Fayetteville. I believe we have concerns. I've asked y'all a couple of times, I've talked to a few council members, that we do have some concerns right now. Over an ordinance that's 10 years old. I've asked that we please sit down and take a look at this ordinance and I asked it two years ago. If we would have looked at this ordinance two years ago, we might have been able to stop what's happened right now. Nevada has stopped it by the same thing that I asked a few council members to do, is basically stop these people, impound the cars. That's what Nevada's done. Now, I've asked Mr. Williams why we cannot do that. And I guess there are rules of why we can't do that. I don't understand why we can't. But other cities have done it. They've impounded their cars. I'm going to tell you what. You take one of these students that's out there, they think it's cool, it's a neat deal to make money on the weekend, go out there and drive, no insurance. If anybody remembers the deal of Domino's Pizza, we go back to them, that they had that 30 minutes there it was free and now all of a sudden, they started having accidents and they found out that the drivers, they didn't have insurance. Your insurance doesn't cover you. I spent the whole weekend sitting up, watching different videos and stuff of Uber and all this. And I couldn't believe some of these Uber drivers have asked Uber just to give them a piece of paper to show them that they do have this insurance that they say they have. And Uber will not give it to them. So, why does Uber not want to give these people a piece of paper that says that while we've got the client in the car, we are insured? Well, one reason is, is what I found out, is that they've got a $1,000 deductible. They're going to stick that deductible to that driver if that driver's in an accident. So, the drivers have now found this out. So, now, more and more drivers are abandoning the program. And they've lowered their rates to rates that are so low in certain areas just to get the people to drive. There's just a lot about this company. I think if you look at this company, that sooner or later, it's going to come out later on. First off, they're not even based in the United States. To me, it's, I just see it as a big laundry game that's going on with a lot of problems. But we're going to get into more and more of them. The first time that some student that's out there, that's a Rideshare, whatever you want to call it, all of a sudden, I mean, if y'all have taken the time to look at this, there's been people that have been hurt in very bad accidents, no coverage. There was a child in California that was run over by an Uber driver. The child's dead, no coverage. Students being raped, no coverage. Girl woke up in a hotel room with an Uber driver, that she was picked up because she was on alcohol. Just a lot of things that just basically, and I mean, I know this is not what we should be talking about, we're talking about Mr. Zimmerman. Okay? If Mr. Zimmerman wants to come into the town, and you know, I had that in my notes, if he wants to come in here and he wants to play the rules, the way that we play the rules, I think that, you know, maybe we should look at it. But I think that before we add another taxi cab company to the city of Fayetteville, isn't it amazing how that nobody wants to be a taxi cab in Rogers, in Bentonville? They all want to come to Fayetteville? Have y'all thought about that? Why? They've got the AMP now up there. They're going to put it while, they've got the museum up there. They've got all this stuff up there in that area, but why do cabs not want to go up there? Those people believe they're invincible up in Rogers. They live in these nice big houses, they live over in Champions, they go out to the bar, they get themselves a drink, and they get in a car, and they drive home. They just don't get a ticket. Now, why? I don't know. Why don't choose to use a cab? I don't understand that either. But, we did have our company in Rogers. We tried it. And we tried to put it up there, and we tried to be a 24-hour service, like we said we would be. It was not able to, we were not able to do that. So we pulled out of Rogers and decided to concentrate on what our main purpose was for Dynasty, and that was to take care of Fayetteville. We have seniors out there that get coupons, and y'all know that. There's a coupon program. You're not going to have that with Rideshare. You've got the VA that gets extra money, and they go and they come and they buy vouchers from us. You're not going to get that with Rideshare. Rideshare people are usually students from when I was out Friday night, and I saw them and stuff like that. These people aren't going to go take these people's groceries, they are senior citizens. We take their groceries into their house. My people actually put them into their refrigerator.
This evening, we're discussing whether we want to have a taxi company to come in and comply with the city code. So I would like for us to direct our conversation on that.
Now, I'm trying to direct my conversation to that. What I'm basically saying is that we have enough cabs out there right now, and what we have is that you need to really take a look at what, what everybody's talking about. Dynasty is out there 24/7. I am putting in the technology right now. I've got the technology right now, and I'm dealing with three, four different companies. We're going to put in the same thing that, that people need, that they can get on their phone, get your app, you can see where our cabs are. You'll be able to, like your problem, you'll be able to see it right there. Is there a cab out there at 8:00 in the morning? Yes, there's a cab out there at 8:00 in the morning. I know there's a cab out there at 8:00 in the morning. I take pride of knowing that we do run 24/7, seven days a week. I will, I'm the one that makes the decision of whether or not I take the cabs off the road when it snows, and I've done it two times so far this year. So to sum it up, I feel like that right now, in my opinion, and that's just my opinion, that we need to take a look at this ordinance. This ordinance is 10 years old. It was a great ordinance 10 years ago, it's not a great ordinance anymore. It needs to have some teeth put into it, it needs to say, define when you want to be a cab company, how long you're going to operate, not just come in here on the weekends and do the weekends and stuff like that, take the money out of the town, and then all of a sudden, you don't, you're not out there servicing the public, and our seniors, our vets, grandma getting to the grocery store. That is important part of being a taxi service in this town. It's not just doing the weekends, getting the bikes, blues, and barbecue, getting the people at the football games. It's a 24/7, seven-day-a-week job. I really don't have much more for the council this evening, because I think I've gone through this many a times. Dynasty is watched, plenty of our operations come into this town, we've often watched a few of them leave. And we still keep our staying, and we maintain ourselves, and we do what is best for this community, and we always have. I appreciate y'all telling us, y'all very much. If you've got a question for me, I'd be glad to answer it. But take it into consideration right now, go out there and look at what your problem is, because you've got a problem out there right now, and that's what you really need to address. And if you go out there on a Friday or Saturday night, I guarantee you, you're going to see cabs sitting.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, Mark.
This might be to go to our attorney. It's my understanding that if we allow a taxi company, a cab company, to operate in Fayetteville, they have to have a presence in Fayetteville, and they have to operate 24 hours a day in Fayetteville. Is that correct?
I'm not 100% sure it is. I think that that's normal, that might be correct. I haven't looked at the ordinance to see if, in fact, that is absolutely required by the ordinance.
Well, that would be kind of important, though, wouldn't it?
That's what I, if I recall when we've had this discussion in the past, that's what we have requested taxi companies to do.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm Joshua Crawford. I've lived in northwest Arkansas my entire life. I've never ridden a cab, so I don't really have a dog in the fights. But to me, it seems like this is the government picking, trying to pick winners and losers. Whenever you're saying, this company can operate here and this company can't, it's the government picking winners and losers, and that's not the government's job. The government, to me, should just have a strict set of regulations for this is what a cab company has to do to operate, and then let anyone come in and operate that wants to operate. So, to me, that's the way it should be. And the fact that we're even having this discussion, to me, is, means we're not really living in a free country anymore.
Okay. Thank you. So we obviously need to answer Mark's question, I would think. I think that's important.
Well, perhaps the applicant could let us know if they have a permanent presence here in Fayetteville, and if they are available in Fayetteville 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Mayor, before you guys go to that, on Code 117.34, it has the requirements for taxi cabs. Section A of that is a decal required, Section B is a notification of address required, Section C is radio dispatch required, D is currently scanners prohibited. So it looks like in terms of the address, it does, doesn't necessarily currently say under the address section, it just says, "Every certificate holder of public convenience or necessities for taxi cabs, pedicabs shall ensure the city clerk's office is promptly notified of any change of business address, failure to comply," so it doesn't necessarily require location.
Okay.
And Alderman, Kenyon, that, and that's why I wanted to get a clear answer on the application itself, of how they worded it, because I wasn't sure if we required it, but that way we get a, you know, in writing that they are going to operate, except those days that the chief said that they wouldn't, you know, certain days that they specify.
And it does, it does state, under the findings of the city council, when you're making a consideration about whether or not to grant this certificate, that the city council shall deny any application in which the proposed hours of service or the proposed rate schedule are found to be unreasonable to meet the public need. So I don't think the ordinance itself requires every taxi company to be 24 hours a day, seven days a week. However, as you're considering whether or not to grant this certificate, you should consider the proposal of the applicant and see whether or not the proposed hours of service are found to be unreasonable to meet the public need. So you can consider that, although it's not an ordinance requirement. I think that every company run 24 hours a day.
And I did not read all of the requirements, or other requirements, insurance, et cetera, et cetera.
So would you like to answer the question, council?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why I described earlier that I understand throughout the week, these guys are, these guys are suffering. And I'm not, I mean, it's just like Green Cab. Green Cab is not down here 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There are times they are not here in this city, because they are in Benton County operating. I'm not trying to do anything spectacular here, I'm just trying to be able to help out and serve my people at the same time. I say my people, but they're, these are people we're bringing to your city to do business. And so, I've offered up the solution, that we're willing to compromise, and we're willing to work with these guys to make sure that there is additional coverage. If they can't handle it, I'll send a car to Fayetteville. I don't, I don't mind that, but that car's going to stay here and operate for a little bit when it does, because it's going to need to recover what it did to come down to Fayetteville. If I've got to pull it out of the airport, for example, to come down here and do business, it needs to do business. I'm willing to compromise with these guys to ensure that nobody is suffering income to their drivers. I mean, one of the biggest complaints up here tonight, like I told you before, was going to be Uber. Stuart said it himself, this is the busiest night. There's one Uber car out right now, and he's in North Springdale. So, what I'm saying is, is there's, there's room here for, for help. At the same time, I'm willing to compromise and work with these guys, and make sure that we all survive, in a competitive industry against somebody like Uber. If that answers your question or not, but...
Okay.
I heard what you said, but I think, yes, I hear what you're saying.
Would anybody else like to have any public comment on this? Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the council and close the public hearing on this particular resolution. So I will leave it now, council. Yes, Adella?
I have a question for the city attorney. I would like to see us do as Mr. Davis has asked, and rework this ordinance. How do we go about that?
Well, if you have any proposals that you would like to make, certainly, we can look at them. Ordnance Review Committee sometimes looks at taxi cab ordinances. I think we should probably certainly delay, at least until the legislature is through, because to see what they're going to do in relation to the Ubers and the Lifts out there, which will have a major, major effect upon the taxi companies here in the city, and we probably ought to wait to see whether or not they are going to be licensed statewide, which is what they're seeking, under the Public Service Commission.
Sure. No, I don't have any proposals. I don't know anything at all about taxi companies. But I would like to convene a group that could possibly work on that ordinance. And so, I will put that on my calendar and bring it up after the legislative session, and we'll, you know, work together and see if we cannot improve the ordinance, and perhaps deal with some of our concerns that are apparently happening in our city.
And if I can, Alderman Gray, as the chairman of Ordnance Review, I would be happy to schedule something after the legislative session, and maybe that's the beginning, or maybe that's, maybe we need to have a public input session before, during, or after. I think all that is a good idea, and I think, so ordinance review might be a first step or a last step, but I think, I'd even be, I can't speak for everybody, but I'd even be in favor of a public input meeting of some sort.
Right.
And maybe then have ordinance review. But anyway, I'm certainly in support of what you're saying.
Yes, and I, you know, I'm on ordinance review too, but I wasn't sure if review meant we review something that's written down, or we put it together in ordinance review. So I hear you saying that we can do both.
I was going to say, maybe have both, and then, and then change it on either way, so...
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Sarah.
Well, I intend to support this request, because I think that one of the things that we can do to, you know, fight off the Ubers and the Lifts, is to have a very robust and responsive taxi cab industry. I know that, you know, the times that I've tried to use a cab, and 20 minutes may not sound like a big deal to a cab driver, but when you're trying to go to work and your car won't start, you don't have 20 minutes to burn. Or if, you know, the guy that picks you up for a date turns into being a jerk, you need to get out of there. You don't want to stand around for another 20 minutes and wait for a cab. And, you know, recently, I was down at the Southgate IGA doing some shopping, and there were two women there waiting for a cab on a very cold day to take their groceries home, and they were, kept calling the cab company, saying, where, you know, where are you? And they were cold, and they needed to get home. And, you know, it's pretty clear that, you know, there, we don't have enough taxi service, you know. So I think that, I think some more taxi drivers would be good, and I'm, I'm hopeful that with the increased competition, it will force more of the modernization of calling a taxi, because I, you know, I'm of the generation where you do everything on your smartphone, and, you know, the idea of like calling up and talking to a dispatcher seems kind of archaic. So I look forward to these technological innovations that will help the industry be more competitive with some of these alleged rideshare groups that are coming in.
Alan.
I'll echo some of Sarah's remarks. I plan to support this too, because I think we do have a need in Fayetteville for companies that follow the rules. I'm not, I don't support Uber coming into Fayetteville, us telling them not to operate and them doing it. That's wrong. We wouldn't permit any business to come into Fayetteville, build something after we told them not to build it, and then just move on and say, yeah, we'll work with you. In fact, Uber called me a few months ago. It was their head of public relations out of Washington DC. And they said, how can we work with you to make this okay? And I said, well, you can stop operating in the city of Fayetteville, and then we'll work on a solution. And they said, well, we're not going to stop. And then I said, well, I'm not going to talk to you about it then. So, I'm going to support this, because this company's playing by the rules, and I think we have a need. And I appreciate you following the rules.
John.
I agree with Sarah, and I agree with Alan to that extent. But let me point out, since it's been such, so much said in deprecation of Uber, let me say a word in their defense. They are the innovators here, folks. They're bringing technology, and remember, it takes two to tango. It's not just Uber selling service, it's our citizens buying service. So, if Uber's operating illegally, I'm sorry, all those citizens are breaking the law too. All right? But I don't think it's really illegal, in a real sense. The law breaks down laws into two broad categories, Mr. Williams. Those that are inherently evil by themselves, and those are inherently wrong, or those that are wrong simply because it's for social convenience, like driving on the left side of the road. There's nothing immoral about driving on the left side of the road. The British do it all day long, okay? But rape and burglary and murder are inherently wrong, they're evil. So we have some laws for regulatory convenience and for safety, we have others because they're inherently wrong. Uber contracting for a service that people are demanding are helping all of our cab companies innovate, and they're seeing needs to develop their own apps to show where their drivers are. If Uber hadn't been here, or hadn't done that, we might not have that innovation. So, they are the innovator. Let's give them that much.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
No motion.
As expected.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any final comments from the council?
He made the motion.
Sarah made the motion. Okay. All right. All right, son?
Yep.
This is the resolution to grant the certificate of public convenience and necessity for two to six taxi cabs.
Right. Could you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Chotmar?
No.
Latier?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Okay. All right, number two, that one went so well. We have the resolution to grant the certificate of public convenience and necessity to College Town Limo for the operation of one to three limousines in the city of Fayetteville. Yes, chief?
So we received an application for a certificate from College Town Limos. They're asking to be permitted for one to three limousines. They've provided all their paperwork with one exception, they have not actually provided a certificate of insurance, they've only provided a quote for the insurance. I'm sure the thought being, they wanted to see if their certificate was approved before purchasing the insurance. It says they will be on call all days of the week. I do want to clear up something that was said at agenda session, I think that a number of 46 was thrown out as the number of limousines that were permitted. That is the number of limousines that has been permitted since this ordinance went into effect. So currently, in 2015, we do not have any limousines permitted in the city of Fayetteville. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay.
Big difference between zero and 46.
Okay. Does the applicant, I'm opening this up for public hearing, I apologize, I should have made that clear. Is the applicant here? Yes, please. Chris, come up.
Mr. Mayor and esteemed council, so glad that we're sort of on the subject already. I'll just be very brief, and then you can ask me any questions, I can talk about this all night. So, the way I see it, just the current situation, and what I can bring to the current situation in Fayetteville, and the effect that I would like to have...
situation in Fayetteville and the effect that I would like to have on Fayetteville with College Town Limo. We just talked about the, the current situation quite a bit. There is a very intense leisure scene in the city, a lot of coming and going that's happening. And I think we discussed about whether there is a lack of hired car service, specifically taxis, but limousines would be in that same category as, they're also a hired car service. And it is my personal experience as a taxi driver that there is, there is a bit of a lack, and we already discussed that earlier also. And more importantly, there's a, a pretty, there's a lack of variety in the types of services that are offered, the levels, there are gaps in the, the levels of service, the kind of amenities you might find in, in the car that you get. For instance, as the, as the chief just pointed out, there are zero limousines permitted in the city, even though you'll, you'll see limousines every Saturday. Every Saturday you'll see limousines because this is a great town for a limousine, for whatever reason, not one yet permitted. I'd like to change that. Okay. And what I would bring, in College Town Limo, I would bring at least one more car, a little bit of, a little bit more capacity for the hired car sector. I would bring a different kind of style, a different range of amenities in, in that car. And also I'd bring relevant work experience that I can, I can use. I, I know, I know about plying the streets of Fayetteville in a professional fashion. And I have run a, a business of my own in the past. So the third point, the overall effect on Fayetteville that I would like to have, I would just like to add a tiny bit of capacity, a tiny bit of, bit of variety to the hired car sector that we have. A little, a little more ambitiously, I would, I would like this addition to enrich the sector as a whole, because I, I really think that the first choice anybody makes before they choose a company, or before they choose a taxi or a limousine, or however, whatever way to get around, the first choice they make is, is whether to rely on the sector as a whole. And so if we can increase the appeal of the sector, the reliability of the sector, the variety within it, we can make it a lot easier to make that decision to decide to be a passenger rather than a driver. And, and we all know about the problems when, when people should be passengers and they're, and they're drivers instead. So that's, that sums it up. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have? Anything? Yes, Alan?
I have a question about the insurance. Chief mentioned, chief taper mentioned that there wasn't an insurance actual policy here, but that we had a quote from the insurance company. So I'm looking at it, but the quote expired February 18th. Is that, it says quote is valid through to 1815.
Well, I actually had, I did have a couple of different quotes. I had one earlier, and I had, before I was able to submit the, submit the application. They're, they're good for 30 days, so any, anyone that I would have applied, would have had to submit with the application at that time would, would technically not be available because that was approximately a month ago when I turned in that application. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm certainly not going to run it without, without insurance, and I, and I, I would expect to be able to get a similar quote to, since the previous few were...
I think we faced this before, and it's, will be incumbent upon the police department after the car's been inspected by fleet, and we get the rest of the documentation to confirm that in fact they have more than a quote at that point, that they actually have insurance coverage before they would ever drive on the street and be issued a decal to, to do that. So it's not really that unusual since the insurance is so expensive to allow someone to have a quote, to prove they can get it, and then not actually pay for the insurance until they've been approved by the city council.
Makes sense.
Mayor?
Mayor, I might just add that the code actually states it cannot be permitted until the certificate is received by the clerk.
Yes, Sandra?
And, and the city clerk's office does issue the certificate, so we will not issue the certificate until we get valid insurance.
Okay. All right. And so, all right, any other, any questions, any more questions? Any other, anyone from the public want to address this on this? The College Town Limo. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the councils.
Move, we approve the permit?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any final comments? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tannett?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay. Under new business. An ordinance approving vacation 15-4948 submitted by USI Consulting Engineers for property located at 3215 North Hills Drive to vacate portions of existing utility easement.
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the city council has determined that the following described portion of the utility easement is not required for corporate purposes, now therefore be ordained by the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following utility easement described in Exhibit B attached hereto and made part thereof. Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with a map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. Number 1, existing water and sewer lines to be relocated by the applicant as approved by city water and sewer department. And number 2, any damage or relocation of existing facilities and associated new easement dedication shall be at the owner developer's expense.
Jeremy?
This property located at the Washington Regional Medical Clinic, and a recent large-scale development for 105,000 square foot women's medical clinic and a parking garage was approved by the planning commission. There are some existing easements and utilities located under the proposed building site, so one of their steps is to request the council to vacate those easements as required by state statute. Vacations of the portions of the utility easements shown on the attached plans are necessary in order to develop the project as approved by the planning commission. Planning commission reviewed this application and voted seven to zero with the two conditions listed in the ordinance.
Okay. What questions do we have in the council for Jeremay on this? Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay.
Move, we go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tannett?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 15-4948 submitted by USI Consulting Engineers for property located at 3215 North Hills Drive to vacate portions of an existing utility easement.
Okay. Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tannett?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business. Is there any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, we have several announcements. First is that the city of Fayetteville will break ground on Phase 1 of the Fayetteville Regional Park tomorrow, Wednesday, March 18th, at 12:30 PM, at 2600 West Judge Cummings Road. The council is certainly invited for this groundbreaking in all of our citizens. This phase 1 of the park includes construction of the entry road, water, electric, sewer infrastructure, six soccer fields, three lighted baseball fields, two restrooms, concession stands, and associated parking. So a time to celebrate with Mark Del Thirteen, hope that you and all the citizens who have the time to do so will come to the groundbreaking. Also this weekend, March 21st, our Ward 4 locations for bulky waste cleanup are taking place on Saturday from 7:00 AM till 2:00 PM. The locations are the Owl Creek School in Ward 4 and the recycling and trash collection facility there on Happy Hollow, excuse me. And then thirdly, the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan Public Comment Hearing is tomorrow at 5:30 PM in Room 326 here at City Hall for citizens, elected officials, any individuals who want to provide comments to the proposed action plan for community development block grant funding for the city of Fayetteville.
You might say ribbon cutting is rain or shine.